First, I pledge allegiance and then after that, Brad's got an announcement about the Anvil Fire.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so prior to the amendment or approval of the agenda, Brad, go ahead. I know you've got something going on with the fire.
So, we have a lot going on this morning in terms of what occurs in North County D. If you're not aware, weather conditions have changed significantly over the past 24 hours and are expected to be very negative in the next 48 hours. So, the Anvil Fire has grown significantly inside and it has reached our trigger points. When I say it reached our trigger points, what I mean is it has caused us to jump to a level three evacuation along the Elk River Road. And that's going to affect approximately, I'm going to estimate, 150 to 200 people. So, from an emergency management perspective, we have initiated our full response to set up a shelter. That's at the church there at 101, and I think it's Route 15 in Port Orford. Red Cross is setting that up, should be up and running right now. I've also got resources coming from out of the county to help me with other emergency management needs. And the sheriff and all his deputies are up there now doing door-to-door evacuations in the infected areas. So, I want to apologize if you see me come in and out, or you see me on these devices. I'm not ignoring you. Multitasking. So, I'll apologize upfront for that. And I just want to point something else out right now. You know, we are, we in Curry County are definitely facing a financial cliff ahead of us with our general fund being depleted significantly and the impacts that that will have next year on public safety. Right now, I'm anticipating close to a $4 million deficit in that general fund. So, we are working diligently to bring some other options to the table for voters, some other options to the table for our community when it comes to public safety. I just want to point something out right now. This is what's really concerning to me. Most of our law enforcement resources are in North County and they're over an hour away from us right now. And that's why what we're trying to do with funding and law enforcement independently from our general fund is so critical. And I just, I just want to bring awareness to that, but I also want everyone in the room to know that we do have a significant situation happening in North County. That's all I have.
Thanks, Brad. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda unless there's an amendment?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion to. And a second to approve the amendment, all in favor say yes.
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 I say yes, motion carries three to zero. So, why we are here today is to talk about public health and mental health. And on April 28, 2021, a resolution was passed transferring local public health authority responsibility to the Oregon Health Authority. On May 6, 2021, a resolution was passed to relinquish local mental health authority to the Oregon Health Authority as well. Commissioners have brought up the desire to return the public, to return the authority of public health and mental health to the county. A workshop was held on August 9th. Many of you were there. And in regards to this subject, this will be a continuation. So, we are just going to move forward. Let's everybody's idea in introducing everybody, or do we kind of know each other, or?
No, I think we're actually agreeable to.
Okay. So let's just start right here. I'm John Burzum, Curry County Commissioner. We'll let, we'll.
Jay Tros, Curry County Commissioner.
Beth Barh, New York City, Director of Curry County Health Association.
My best friend and retired prison chaplain in Detroit. Hannah Lowry, provider at Coast Community from Port Orford.
Zina Hafler, Hospital-Based Health Center Coordinator and Public Health, or Community Health Supervisor for Coast Community Health.
Zina Warren for Coast Community Health, Community Health Department.
Helena Shergin, Superintendent of Schools for Brookings, Upper School District.
Phoebe Skinner, Gold Beach City Council Health Liaison.
Sergeant Jeremy Chrome, I'm the jail commander for Curry County.
Daltar Lee, citizen.
Curry Burgham, CEO of Adapt, Integrated Culture.
Melissa Henderson, Community and Chapel Liaison for Advanced Health.
I'm Stowe Perry, Assistant Director of Oregon Community Health, Self-Sufficiency and Leadership.
Kieran, Director of Behavioral Health and Advanced Health.
Deb Hensel, I'm Innovator Agent for Oregon Health Authority.
Dana Drone, Local and Tribal Public Health Manager.
Eric Porter, Behavioral Health Director with All Care Health.
Brad Alcum, Curry County Commissioner.
Ted Fitzgerald, Director of County Operations, County Council.
Josh Ballack, Vice President of All Care Health.
Oh, I didn't see, I'm sorry. Connie, you were out of my sight. There.
Okay. Outside of mine is not good. Connie Hupster, Curry County Suicide Awareness Prevention Council, there are steps.
Good morning, I'm Laura McKean. I'm the Senior Director of Oral Health Services and Community Engagement with All Care.
Sam Vaughn, Community Engagement Manager for Advanced Health.
Darius Solomon, Chief of Regional Business Operations for Adapt, Integrated Culture.
Welcome, everybody. Really a pleasure to have you here. And last, last meeting, we kind of started out with mental health. On this agenda, public health is on the first thing on the agenda. So, let's start there. And so, the conversation is open and this will be, you know, if you got, it will be decently in an order. So, you'll raise your hand if you have something to talk about and we'll get to everybody. Go ahead.
OHA has information probably on public health. From my understanding, it's, a lot of public health has been kind of dispersed, some in Josephine County is taken care of.
So, I know what you mean, it's just that.
Okay, so now, can you give us a big, like, kind of, who has which parts of public health right now?
Absolutely. Me too. So, so the Public Health Authority sits with the Oregon Health Authority itself. Dr. Tim Seidlinger, who is the State Health Officer, is the Health Officer basically for Curry County for the jurisdiction as a State Health Officer. Environmental Health, so those are the licensing work, the inspections, food, pool, tourist facilities, that's managed by OHA. We issue the licenses. We have been working with Josephine County to provide, to do the on-the-ground work. They have struggled. They had a person, that person left. So, we've been kind of tag teaming with them. They are helping us with sort of high priority, like if a facility is opening and there needs to be an opening inspection, temporary kinds of things. So, like if there's a street bear or something like that, inspecting those. And then also pool and tourist inspections. I will be honest, we do have a backlog on the food inspections. We, but are working to work with our way through that. We are, we do send the staff person down to do those and not surprisingly, to your point this morning with the fire, we've also had some issues sort of getting where we need to go with the fires or the person getting stuck on one side and can't get home. So, so those have been some of the challenges this summer. The good news is that we have been working and finally received position authority to hire someone to do the work in Curry. And that work, that position is in the process of being, going through class and comp. Once it comes back from there, we will be opening a recruitment. So, that, that is the long-term solution. And, and we will continue to sort of fill the gaps while we can with sort of the higher priority kinds of public, public health needs there. So, that's great news that we, we got a plan path. Curry, the WIC program, we contract with Josephine County and they are providing services here in Brookings five days a week with the exception of four days a month, two days there in Gold Beach, I believe at the library, and two days they are in Port Orford at Coast Community Health Center. And so, the staff person goes to Gold Beach and Port Orford. So, Brookings is in staff those four days. Most, my understanding is that most of the clients are in the Brookings area and that's why there's sort of the imbalance of, you know, why there are more days here. Yeah. We, the tobacco and alcohol and drug prevention work is being done actually by the County Juvenile Department. So, we have a contract with them to do that. And then, the communicable disease investigation, so there are a number of diseases that come through in lab reports that are reportable to the state and because we want to, you know, mitigate spread, those kinds of things. OHA is handling any of the COVID-related outbreaks. So, we're really focused on high consequence settings, the long-term care facilities, other kind of congregant settings because much of COVID in a facility like that, I couldn't run with it. And those are the folks who are most vulnerable. So, we are handling that. HIV Alliance is doing, they, they have done work with some sugar awareness community for a long time. They are handling all the sexually transmitted infections that are reportable and then we follow up tuberculosis and then also HIV. And then we are contracting with Coast to do all the other reportable communicable disease work. And we've been, we're so excited. I haven't had a chance to meet Zina yet, so I'm so glad to see you today. But I have been working with, with Nina and we are like super close. They've finally got access to our system that enables them to do the investigations. And so, working on, we'll be having staff come down and do training with them. So, very excited about that. And then, so that kind of covers the communicable disease investigation. We also are working with Coast around immunization access. And then, Josephine County, I left out, they are doing the school law review. So, every year, there's a review of records, Nina, you know this well, around making sure kids are up to date with their vaccination or if they have an exemption that that's in place. And so, Josephine County does the review of that because they have great experience with that. But they partner with Coast to create access for weeks for kids that need updates on vaccination. And then I'm super excited that this will be the second year of School-Based Health Center back in Brookings Harbor and then in Gold Beach, I think for the first time. The Coast is responsible for that. And they're really good on access points, especially in the Gold Beach area. So, so that's kind of the, the overall, drinking water is something the county did have when it was the local public health authority. OHA has taken that on and we have staff that do that and we do that for a number of counties around the state. So, that just slaps right into our usual work. And I'm just happy to answer. So, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about, about all of that, but that's kind of like the lay of the land looks like.
That's extremely helpful because it was hard to navigate, like kind of who has which piece in public health.
Yeah, and I would just say, and I know you and I sort of reached out via email, yeah, I'm always happy to answer questions and to have outreach for commissioners if you have particular concerns or questions. So, I had that kind of connection with Commissioner Voice and it's kind of being established and I get here, so I'm super excited to keep her in.
Good to have you.
Thank you.
Just quick, so I'm kind of wearing two hats as the, the director, or the chairperson for the school board as well. So, I have a question on the school-based health clinic. What services are being provided? Can you give us?
Yeah, so, uh, our school-based health centers right now are, we have it opened, yeah, we'll be officially open on the 25th of this month when our provider arrives. We offer basically any services that a primary care clinic would provide. So, we do any sort of acute visits for kids that might have a sore throat or a hearing or things like that. We do well child checks. We manage medications. We, we typically don't take over as a patient's primary care provider, but we can if they don't have one in the local area. So, really anything that a primary care clinic would do for them. And if we can't do it in the office, we can recruit them.
Okay, perfect. So, but mainly using medical, because it.
No, no, well, I haven't gotten there yet.
Oh.
And then, in addition to medical, we have a behavioral health provider who sees kids in the schools, Brookings two days a week and then Gold Beach two days a week. And she is, Sarah Brown is her name, and she is doing a lot of work in those school districts. And she's been actually working continually through the summer and with her patients and her students that she sees there. And now that Sarah has a weight lift. Yes, we can do more. Yes, and Sarah would like to increase her arms, we'd love to try to do that, but we're currently other provider, yes.
So, Nina, I got a question. Do we, do we, you know, it's been a while, I got a grandson in junior high school in Brookings, but we don't have school nurses anymore, like, we do, okay, we still have school nurses.
Yeah, so Julie.
In every school?
Uh, no.
Did you leave K-School?
We have one district nurse.
Okay.
And then there's two nurses assistants, one at K-School and one at the middle school. So, Julie hangs at the high school a lot.
Okay.
And she goes where she's needed.
And how about Gold Beach and Port Orford or Pacific, are they?
So, Gold Beach does not have a school nurse currently. And 2CJ does not have a school nurse currently. I was acting as school nurse for 2CJ for a short amount of time, but they really didn't need a full-time person there. So, then I was like, I could just be your on-call nurse. Right next to her most of the time, so. But I think that in the future, if we could develop a program where something similar to a school-based health center, 2CJ School District could benefit from that, especially if, with access to care at the high school because they're kind of out in the middle of nowhere. So, that would be very helpful for them.
We'll have a good working relationship with.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Good.
Does that answer it?
Yes, it does. It's helpful. Thank you. So, oh, yeah.
One element, and remind me, I was working in 2CJ, so I remember this. When you guys are doing the school-based health center, it's open to all of the kids, not just the kids attending, right? Actually, that's a really good question, if you may, because we've had a recent change. So, Brookings Harbor School-Based Health Center is only open to K through 12 students and faculty and staff. That is due to a city code that we've been, that's what brought to our attention. So, is that the enrolled or is? Kids that, yes, enrolled students.
It's enrolled. It's because our schools are in a residential zone and so for traffic, traffic purposes, the city at this time has.
During school hours.
That we only do enrolled students.
Gold Beach, on the other hand, we can see anyone in the community. We do prioritize students because that's where they're at, but we can, if we have openings, which we do now, right now, we are happy to see people in the community. And we have, we have a separate mobile trailer so community members don't have to actually come into the school to be seen.
Probably won't have the openings after people see this. Just saying. Thank you, Nina.
And Nina, that's just the kids or is that adult, is that zero to 18? At the. At Gold Beach? At Gold Beach, it's, as we like to say, cradle to grave. All right, there you go.
So, Dana.
Dana.
Dana. Thank you for correcting me.
You like that?
Yeah. No, I get it all the time because people wish, wish for my name too. Dana, so, if, well, first off, let me ask you this. What does the, what are the reporting requirements look like from, you know, you have several different kind of fingers handling different things. What are the reporting requirements look like for OHA to these, for these organizations reporting back as a, as the public health authority?
Right, so, well, obviously for the, in our health work, we are, I mean, we have an agreement with Josephine County. We have, we've met with them regularly and obviously we can see all the data too. So, and ultimately, we, you know, are responsible for that. For, and then similarly with the communicable disease work, I mean, we are monitoring what comes in from the labs. We can see all of that. So, we can tell if work is being done or not and if there are gaps. If that provider, if, you know, if, once these guys are on board, you know, if there's anything, we would call them. With WIC, again, we can see the services that are being provided. Of course, there's, for all of these, there's financial reporting and then in the case of Coast, there's some quarterly reporting that they do. But generally, I mean, we're meeting with folks regularly and then I can mean quarterly, I'm meeting with all of the contractors and partners doing work, public health-related work so that we can get a verbal update and then also are there connections that need to be made between the work? So, like, if, for example, there isn't, you know, making sure that Josephine County, you know, school law books are connecting with Lena and team around immunization clinics and making sure that information goes out. So, that's, you know, that is, we are talking regularly, I would say, as well as able to, you know, monitoring the data around the work.
Okay. And if the, if the, if the commission were to choose to work towards retaining the public health authority, what would that look like?
So, there are a couple, well, there, there, there's the piece around, is, are you asking more of a process question around what would the process be to take it back or what would it look like if you took it back and were providing services? Those are really two different questions.
I think probably both. Because if we went through the process, we'd also want to know what the outcome is.
Right. So, why don't I start, review on the process and then talk about sort of the work and then maybe go back to the process? Because the work might influence what you want to know more about in terms of the process. So, we have only recently had provision in the statute around how we would actually, we had the statute, how a local jurisdiction would transfer their authority to the state. We didn't have anything in the statute around how we get it back.
Right, no, we learned that.
Yeah.
We were having conversations with several of the OHA leadership in Salem. They were like.
We don't. Yeah, so we've not done this before, but we do have now statutory provisions as well as Oregon administrative rule. I believe I, I believe I gave all those to you or you have them, Mr. Fitzgerald. So, there's sort of four years is kind of the magic timeline. So, you all passed your resolution in, originally on April 28th. So, what you, what we would need to do is count 180 days from April 28th, 2021. That then is considered your official date of transfer to the state. And then we would count out four years. I've looked at it and I don't have the exact date, but it's like October, November, 2025. It's, it's 25 weeks and five days is the 180 days. Because I was working on that this morning. They, at the four-year mark, if it's been more than four years, you basically, you know, pass an ordinance or a resolution, making the request, you provide that to OHA and you also explain your reasons. Because I think obviously there were reasons to transfer it to the state and so we would want to understand the reasons of why it would be important to have it back. And if it's been four years or more, that's kind of what you have to do. Then you enter into kind of a partnership with us. We would work with you to, what programs are you going to be doing? What's the funding that you would be doing, you know, get receiving from us? And really, meeting with whoever is leading that project. I think it's important that if you take this back, like, it's a heavy lift and it's not something someone can do with like two hours a week. It's just not doable. I mean, I would recommend you hire a consultant to do it. It's not, like, you can't add this on your job. You may be, you may be Superman, but, you know. So, just from experience of having worked through these, so it is a heavy lift because it, it means that there's going to be an understanding of the programs, how are you going to staff it, how are you going to fund it, how are you going to meet your requirements, what are all the provisions? And so, we would work with you around that. We would also enter into memorandum of understanding around sort of what is the date that that transition's going to occur? We would arrange work, there were a transfer of the equipment, if there were, you know, transfer files, like, all of those kinds of things. That's the easy stuff. It's really sort of figuring out what does it look like? If you seek to have that transfer occur prior to, say, fall of 2025, it is a heavier lift because in, you know, the legislature wanted to be sure that, you know, we're not constantly in a place where services are being transferred to the state and then quickly they're being transferred back to a county and vice versa, you know, with the change of commissioners, quite frankly. Because it does observe the citizens.
Yeah, and I just want to clarify that's, you know, it's no one's intention here, but since it is sort of, I mean, an obligation of most counties.
Right.
It seems like, it seems to me and to everybody else that we should, you know, we should fully understand how we would implement it. And, and I mean, I feel like we have a, because there is a, you know, there is a local component that you guys just have difficulty, you know, certain. And I'm not saying that we can do it either. I'm just saying that it would be a long, this is a, it's, we assume that it would be a heavy lift and I don't want to do anything that we're not prepared to actively deliver with.
Yeah, and I think how long runway to get there?
Right, I think it's a great idea.
So, and, and we, you know, we've been through these processes. We've gotten pretty good at sort of what's the process and how do we do it? And it's really key, having someone who kind of understands it, is a quick study, can, and really can sort of think about it and has the ability to put the infrastructure in place. If you do it less than four years, you, there are certain benchmarks, you, certain documentation deliverables and benchmarks you're going to need, you're going to need to provide to us in addition to the reason for the request and the formal action, kind of what has changed since the transfer and why an earlier transfer would be beneficial. This is all laid out in rule, which I believe you have. We'll need a financing plan. The funding you receive from us is not necessarily sufficient to cover all of its costs. This is a joint sort of local, state endeavor of public. A staffing plan, including if you know who the public health administrator will be. You'll need to provide us with a description of all, how all of the public health, environmental health program requirements that you'll be taking on will be implemented. Any descriptions of contracts, if you're going to contract out the services, and I can talk about that if you'd like for me to. And then the location and hours of operation. You would submit that to us, we would review it. We're going to be looking at things for the rules, sufficient staffing, if you're willing to commit local funding versus relying just on state and federal funds. And really a demonstration of an ability to implement in that, you know, in that early phase. Those very specific things are not attached to a request that comes when you're wanting the transfer back after the four, or at, or after the four years. Does that make sense?
Sure.
We would still probably get at those things as we work with you if you are looking at after the four-year marker later, just because that's part of like the work that happens to figure out how you're going to implement. But you wouldn't be submitting sort of something where OHA would be like, we're approving or denying this request, whereas prior to the four years, we would, we would be making that interrogation.
So, just quick.
Just something quick. It's complicated.
And it's, it's good to get this knowledge now and not like under the gun of, you know, there's, like you said, there's a runway that's fairly long, but also very short. But is there, is there a possibility that? But, uh, is there, is there a possibility that, um, that, that at some point, OHA could do a presentation on all of these things that you would request from a county? You could provide a presentation to the county on what you guys are doing for these things? Your financial layout, your staffing plans for public health inquiry?
We could. I mean, we certainly can. What I will tell you is though, OHA's responsibilities in a transfer are different, frankly, than the responsibilities the county has.
No, that, I understand that.
So the county actually has more. And so I think, um, it, I think probably what would make more sense is we can share with you how we're doing those things, but to provide you a presentation around all the things that you would be expected to do and those program, uh, program requirements so that you fully, you have the full picture. And when we have these conversations in other counties in the past, what we've done sometimes is actually bring our program subject matter experts who know that so that they can, they can really answer sort of the questions and the needs that you mentioned about all those pieces.
Yeah, because what we get a lot is, you know, questions around, around these topics. Like, you know, um, what, what are the plans for, um, environmental inquiry? Or, um, is there going to be an increase in, in WIC, um, representation throughout the county? Things like that. And I guess it would be, it would be nice to be able to answer some of those questions, even if it's on behalf of OHA, but just to be able to say, well, this is what OHA is currently working towards. As opposed to being like, uh, what else?
Yeah.
You know, so...
So we, we would be happy to do that and sort of give you, and maybe it's a couple-step process. Maybe it's providing a more comprehensive picture rather than just this thumbnail that I give you of what's currently happening and sort of what we envision. And then, I mean, I will say, I mean, I don't anticipate it will expand much. I mean, we are, you know, we are using kind of all available funding we have. This is an expensive model to do it this way, um, to provide these basic public health and safety kinds of services.
It's kind of a triage model, which obviously sometimes gets too expensive too.
Yeah, right.
You're in multiple different directions.
Because I'm paying for Coast Community Health Center to have capacity so that if there's a communicable disease outbreak, you know, a, a E. coli outbreak or something in a nursing home, to be able to respond to that.
Sure. But I think the, the big point in why we're having this conversation is we want to be extremely thoughtful. But I don't think anybody here wants to do a ready-fire-aim method.
Right.
You know, and so the more we learn about what OHA's been able to do over the last couple of years, I think better prepares us for the potential transition, if there is one, or deciding, you know, this is actually working, you know, better. So I, I think that conversation can continue as much as...
And there was a time when Commissioner Vois and I were meeting every four to six weeks to catch base. I mean, I'm happy to set up that kind of engagement with you all on a regular basis if that's something you would be interested in.
I make a motion that you and Deanna meet once a month at least. Brad, you second that?
Sure.
All in favor, say yes. I say yes.
Thanks, Jay.
Brad, you say yes?
Sure.
No, I'd be happy to. But that's, you know, personally, that's, that's why I feel we're here. We, we want to, as a commission, we want to say, we appreciate what you're doing. But if we've got questions, we need to be able to, to, to ask and, and, you know, I've been here the longest, we, we weren't doing it, folks. We weren't, and you guys know that. I think everybody in this room knows that we weren't doing it correctly. And, man, when I look around this room and see you folks, I think, this, you got, this, we got, we got people. And they're good people. But the communication might have, you know, might have been dropped. We, I, I admitted last meeting to Laura that I, I'm her, I'm her liaison or a contact. And we haven't got, but we've talked since numerous times. So that's, that's, to me, that's where the, the, we've fallen. And that's what we need to fix. And because we can't do this as a county because we don't have the dollars. I mean, you know, Brad said it earlier. Even, even if we do get funding for the shift, the law enforcement, that'll just, we'll, we'll just, we'll just make it. There won't be a deficit maybe. So, um, and I apologize for going off, but I just think that's the, that's the place where I'm at is we just have to be able to have somebody that we can visit with and, and make communication. I think, you know, get, get more on board with what everybody's doing.
Well, I think that, I think that long-term, our goal should be to be performing these duties. I mean, we have an obligation to the constituents of the county. And, and I think that, that passing it along to the state is not, is long-term, not, that's the plan.
Well, the key is, the key is to work-to-work balance. And to make sure that, that needs of the county are being met and they are efficient. You know, people being taken care of, uh, while we're balancing the funding issues and, and those types of things. And, and part of the key to balance is oftentimes oversight, making sure that we are a voice for our people.
Yeah, I appreciate your, your interest and care. And, you know, we want to sort of get people who are in county as much as you do. Certainly their constraints do all, you know, just in terms of financials. And I think if it is a long-term goal to eventually take it back, I mean, I think there'll be, there'll need to be some careful planning. I've seen a variety of transitions, maybe not transfers, but transitions from an entity that's providing the services right of county versus if sitting within, fully within county government. There's a piece that always has to sit within county government. And there is a pretty significant financial oversight piece, even if you tran, even, even if you contract out the work. Um, but I, I can say quite confidently, in all of those situations where I've seen transition of services, if there's not a local general fund investment or some other fund investment, it is really difficult to be successful. That's just the reality from, from my experience. And, and I, there, there just have been a number of these kinds of situations.
Well, thank you. Um, any other public health? Check?
Uh, so my name's Jacqueline Antunes. I'm the executive director of Wallace House, our child advocacy center.
Hi, hello.
So, um, I, we are just finishing our Kami grant modifications. And I need to know who I put on my, um, application as the public health person for our county that needs to be engaged with our multidisciplinary team.
Let me get that for you. If, if you need to put it on me, find anyone temporarily, you can. It would be more appropriate for it to be the person for our injury and prevention program. But if you have a, a quick deadline, um, then we will, you know, I can definitely get that.
Okay, thank you. I just got it back, so I was like, oh, she's here.
I can't remember who we sent them.
I, I don't remember. They moved off. And so when I got my grant back from Robyn, she was like, um...
Okay, got it. I will, I will track that down for you.
Thank you.
Make sure I or someone gets back to you.
Any more questions?
Are we going to continue with public health or talk about adapt?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to continue with public health until we're done talking about public health. And then go to adapt. Okay. And didn't want to miss an opportunity.
Any more public health questions? Okay.
I have a question. I just have a comment. Having worked in public health for three years, I was under a community health contract by the county. I can just echo that, yeah, the same potential burden. We've, we were, public health is always in the front of the hearing, in the hearing, and the sentence. We've got no reason to be fought for. I personally testified in legislative, um, session for additional funds for community-based organizations like ours and working to respond for inter community healthers to, um, receive additional funding to support, um, public health activities like acute communicable disease prevention or street outreach and arm reduction programs that we support and partner with HIV and HIV supply in Central Curry, um, for our organization. HIV is in South Central and Martha Curry, just to be clear, and providing their services. So I just wanted to reiterate that it is, public health has historically been underfunded and we don't have a local capacity to invest. It would be very frustrating as a, as a authority, you'd be very frustrated with, um, that what, what I saw and what I heard from people with much more experience with public health in mind, um, was that many of the, what would have been running generally programs were, were deleted from the service menu under that, for that leadership. And so really worked hard on where the monies are available for Medicaid. They're billing things, and other, really creative, um, and think outside the box on how to fund public health in intention and the, so that services can be robust in our county. I should consider this.
That kind of sounds like, I mean, that's what you were saying earlier. That if, if you were to stand a pervert and back up, the key would be the right person running that.
And, and money.
Yeah.
Which comes first, the money or the person?
Well, I mean, I think that is, I think that is something to consider. I, I mean, OHA does not, I mean, as I mentioned, we're using the funding that would have been going to Curry as the public health authority to fund the basic services, which I admittedly are not the full suite of services that you would want or you, that you would want now, but that you would want or that you, and that you would probably be doing if you were the local public health authority. Um, because it is an expensive model. Um, and so because of that, there's, we don't have, like, we aren't able to grant the county funding to fund that runway to get to where you need to go. And so I think if, if you were wanting that runway, it's thinking about like, how are you going to, how are you going to staff that? And how are you going to fund it to get the infrastructure in place? Um, you know, one county that used to be part of a health district, public health district that exited, they, they had, it was either a staff person or a consultant that they had who worked on it. And then they also had an outside public health consultant do some work with them around policies, procedures, those kinds of things as well. And those were things that they, they had to figure out how to fund.
Right.
Uh, because we are, you know, there can't be a gap in services. So there's got to be this sort of, you know, continuity and then you being it. Get it built, you know, start to get it built enough that then it can transition.
And I think if I could, I mean, to that, to that point, I think, would you say now that it would be an advantage for, um, the county to start building relationships with those partners that are already providing some of those services in our community? Our local nonprofits that are working with populations? I think that that would help for, for all of us to have a better, clearer understanding of the environment and landscape that we're all working in as to be inclusive in that process. So I would ask that the board commissioners should come through. And you are, you know, bringing us together, what we are today, um, during, as we're on the runway, so that we're, we're all clear on the rights. Just so it's what, um, it's where we need to go, where we are, where we need to go. Yeah, yeah, that's the goal.
And you do have several options about how it could look. So I think definitely a coalition kind of, if you would, or a steering group sort of provide that. I know in other counties, when they thought about a transfer or thought about a significant change, maybe, you know, moving most of the services into a contract model with a nonprofit. Um, they, you know, they brought us all together. We were there, our, um, some of our programs were there, really talked through the various pieces. Um, and then kind of figured out what does the model need to be? Or did it not make sense? Um, you know, you have the option, I mean, you could bring it all in-house to the county government and basically establish a health department within the county government. But you also could have kind of a smaller piece that sits within the county government. You have to have a local public health administrator who's at least a part-time employee of the county. Because they are your, basically your agent. They're the one with the enforcement authority. And then, um, you could have contracts, say, for example, if they were willing with Coast to do the communicable disease work. And then you would be providing oversight of that. But the, the public health administrators, the one who holds the authority. So, um, they would need to be overseeing that work. Um, you likely would need your financial department overseeing these. Often there are federal funds. And so most of the funds are separate, federal, separate recipient funds, if you're familiar with that, which requires us at the deeper level of kind of scrutiny. Um, as you can do, and there are counties that have done that. Some have done it well, some, some have had to, over the years, sort of tighten up policies and procedures. But that is another model. And an entity that wanted to take all of it, um, you know, that would be an option. Um, I don't think Coast wants to be in the environmental health business. I can't speak for them, but it doesn't seem like an area that, um, you know, there might be pieces that sit with the county. Um, environmental health might sit with planning. And that, that happens in some counties and then other services sit elsewhere. So there, there are, there are some options, but any of it is, it takes time to get that all in place.
Just a minute.
Yes, sir.
It sounds like there are other counties that have been this route already, you know, where they lost their public health, the state took it over, OHA, and then it came back. Do you, do you have, can we learn from there? Can we talk to somebody in another county and find out how they did it and some of the nuances involved?
So we, so there may have been a county or two decades ago that this happened with. Um, we have two counties that have transferred their authority, Lalawa and Curry. And so this is the first conversation we've ever had about taking it back. Now, having said that, there are some similar situations where, um, so Gillon County is the county that was part of, um, uh, the North Central Public Health District, which was Wasco Sherman and Gillon Counties. Gillon County, and as of July 1st of 2022, exited their integral agreement in that district and became part of their own local public health authority. So they're still new in that process, but this would, so there would be some similarities to that process. They're the ones who, you know, they, they fronted money to get things stood up with us. And there was a staff person and they, they were the ones that also hired a consult, a couple of consultants. Um, so we have that as an example. Douglas County shifted from having a kind of in-house department to a model where it's a little bit more diffuse, but they have a nonprofit, several nonprofits that they're working with. And they have, uh, they still have a full-time public health administrator who also doubles as their public health officer. So that's another sort of place to go. Columbia County actually had, they were, they were an entity that had contracted out all the services. And, um, gosh, it's probably been about five years now. They then decided to bring parts of it back into the county government. And over time, actually, I think all, everything but WIC is now sits within the county government. So there are different, there are different models. So that's why we kind of know what the process would sort of look like. But we've not had anyone, you know, transfer. We also had Curry when Curry, um, you know, the county decided that they didn't want Curry Community Health to be the, the provider. And they brought it in, you all brought it back into the county. Um, unfortunately around the timing, I mean, that was sort of a messy process. And then kind of sort of the Goliath, and then a month later, the pandemic hit. So, I mean, it was sort of the perfect storm. So we kind of, there's some things to learn from that as well.
I think in our discussions, it'll begin to get a form about some of the counties that, um, are, are able to do it well in terms of, um, you know, having different providers providing the services and managing the services. Um, because if, if it was a future for Curry to retain the public health, then I think that would be a probably ideal model. And to see which ones do it right, which ones.
Yeah, and I think that, and I think that model might, I mean, you're a very, and, you know, way better than I do. I mean, you're a very long county. And, and there's a big difference between Brookings and then Port Orford. And then, as you all know, like, being able to provide services... And then, as you all know, like, being able to provide services all along that area is challenging just because of the distance, the geography, things that can happen with the highway. And so I do think there's, there will need to be some innovative thinking to make sure that the whole county is being served, because I think that, that, I mean, that will always be a challenge because of just those, those big differences in the geography.
Sure.
But I, but I think there's some sort of building.
Sure.
I agree. I think, you know, just since I've been around, COSS Community Health and Fort Orford is huge, you know, and Curry Community Health, Curry, Curry Health Network is there, you know, Dr. Pittford, I think, is still, so, man, it, you know, to see that and then moving down into Gold Beach and now into the Rush Building, this is, we made giant steps, I think, as Curry County. And, but there's always been that, you know, for, Brookings, Gold Beach, Fort Orford, yeah. And, and it's, you know, there's a half an hour between each one, and it's a, it's a divide.
Right. So, yeah. The bottom line is we want to work with you.
Yeah.
How, where that looks, if it's, if it's providing more encouragement on the public and regular childrens, I would really welcome that. And if it's sort of really digging in and getting around the table and figuring out, what might this look like? I think it's, it's gonna serve you better and sort of the people agree, however, if you are really looking at that bringing it back, say, within the next few years, really early, getting around the table with your partners and with us, to figure out what that looks like as much as possible, and then do the formal action.
Right.
So that you're, you're not, you're not on a timetable that might feel a little bit arbitrary and really get in private.
That's true, yeah. That's, well, I think when we talk about that two-year timeline, that's election year.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah. So today is filing day. You can file to be a county commissioner today, September 14th. And so, right?
Oh, I didn't want to interrupt you.
No, you're fine.
So I'm on the board of Douglas Public Health Network, and you were mentioning, that's the nonprofit that was formed in Douglas County and take on a lot of the public health function. Anyway, I'm just gonna mention, we're very happy with that model, and I'm sure, you know, our staff and Dr. Dan Hopper, who's the county person who's led as a medical administrator, I'm sure they'd be happy to share, you know, what they've done and you can consider whether it's a fit for Curry. And of course, Commissioner Freeman has been very instrumental in really supporting that and kind of engineering and helping it work. And I know you guys already have a connection with him, and I'm sure he'd be happy to share what the, what that looked like from the commissioners' perspective.
And that was born out of then actually taking an action to transfer the authority, and then he came into office, and it's like, I'm not sure this is the right direction. And they're doing far more than would ever have happened if OHA were the local, were the public health authority for that.
Great, always, maybe, especially with that.
Yeah. I have a question. So it sounds like this transition in 2021 was related to maybe funding or staffing or both, or, or committed? Do we know? I mean, was this changeover to hand it back to the state because there wasn't enough money to make the program run? Well, not, or not? I mean, as, because that would be the, the issue going forth, probably, is having enough money to pay at work the next time.
And staffing was an issue, and people were leaving, and it was COVID, you, like you said, Dana. And then we had no, we couldn't even give a person a shot. We had no professional person as far as health-related. So, well, and I, I'm gonna just add, like, that was after. I think the, the true crux of some of the problem was the actual transition was very abrupt, and it was, it was not necessarily a handoff as much as it was, yeah.
Throw the grenade.
So, so there, it was, it was very much ready fire aim, right? So it was, it was much different than the dialogue that we're having right now, which I think led to a lot of scrambling, a lot of unknowns, a lot of figure it out as you go. And then in the midst of that, the other piece, so.
A hundred jerk hands.
A lot of ready fire aim, which is kind of what Curry County has been known for in a lot of areas, and we need to, that's why, that's why we're having this conversation, because that doesn't work out.
This is your chance.
Right.
Medical shooting our wound, dude. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to mention, I've been someone that's advocated for an affiliated nonprofit, and that's what we're talking about in this model. And I think one of the things that was brought forward after our last conversation about mental health and also public health was we need that type of community. And so one of, one of the things that can really happen in an affiliated nonprofit is to provide that, especially if you have really good development capabilities that are connected with the community and the community's needs, and you develop things from that. So I'm liking what I'm hearing here, but I like to know more too.
Bebe?
I have big praise. Thank you for bringing everybody together. I think these conversations are essential, and I encourage you guys, I know you, I meet with other commissioners, you already know, work with some Douglass, by continuing those conversations with those counties that were mentioned and reaching out to those people, because we're all in this together. I would say on another, two kind of bigger levels. One, I don't like to say this all the time in Curry County, but I lived in Multnomah County for 20 years, but prior to that, I lived in Jasmin County for 20 years, and they're both really big counties too. So like, we do have a stretch, but everybody has big, right, counties. There's very few counties that you can get from one end to another in less than an hour, 45 minutes, right? Whatever that might be, geography or traffic. The other piece that is awkward, and then I'll leave with a good little story. The other piece that we're just not talking enough about, and I taught here for 10 years in Curry County, we're not talking about money. We're talking about public safety levies. I obviously know a lot about special districts. My husband runs the library in Curry County and for the Curry public library in Gold Beach, but we're not talking about the dollars that needs to run this. And like, what kind of, you talk about a heavy lift, like actually putting price tags on this, I think that has to be part of those, the conversation. I think those numbers have to be said out loud, so I think people just don't get it. Like, people might want to say, I want local control. They might reach out to you, you're off the road, but like, actually having that number to give back and saying what our actual numbers are, I think those numbers need to be more commonplace where people can reference them. I can't, I can't reference the numbers for the county budget, I can't reference the cost for that, and that's something I need to learn. All right, and then the good story, because it's about innovation, right, and money, is the school in Gold Beach. So that's sort of schools up, that's Riley Creek. So Riley Creek is our new K-6 school in Gold Beach. They have a woman who comes in and they have that read-to-the-dog program. You guys know these kind of programs? Well, she has also been, and when I first was on city council, the old leadership in COSS community, when it first got transferred, dog bites and things were a huge issue, right? And trying to figure out how to educate the public and how to educate pet owners and how to deal with disease transmission. Well, this woman that volunteers her time to come in and lead with the puppy has worked with other insurance companies to get literature and teaching materials to teach kids about how to interact with dogs. So you have a volunteer working with for-profit insurance companies doing public health. So I think that kind of collaboration not only helps on the bottom line, but it helps, like Point was saying, bring in that community connection and knowledge. So I think there are good stories that we can tell in this, and those are always good to like grab onto as we're trying to share and learn. That was my thinking.
Thank you for ending on positive stories. It always count on the unity of the thought.
Try.
Anything else around public health?
I, I'm the instructor for the state, working with the community services, and I just appreciate being at the table. We serve one in three people in Curry County, and that's thousands of people. And that's through all the different programs that we have with child welfare, aging people disabilities, what we have in self-aidation. And so we have a, we have a vested interest on how this all comes out. I can't be a part of the table, so that, you know, I'm a county partnership coordinator, I'm not a decision maker, but I'm the one that takes all the information back, both locally and statewide. And so I appreciate being at the table and just this conversation, really meets up with everyone's learning things and, you know, trying to go to all the card that the table can, that's the wish, and I would just really thank you for providing this.
Thanks for coming, yeah. Got that big building going.
We do have that big building going.
Yes, you did, but that is big.
But I wish I sounded like a concrete brick bar.
Our building inspector's pulling his hair out, too, but it's still hurting, it's going great, so. Okay. Well, we can.
Transition?
Yeah, we can transition to mental health if everybody has talked public health and they're done with it. Once, twice, raise your hand now. Okay, mental health. So we have Greg Brigham here, Brigham here from ADAPT and Jerry O'Sullivan. And, you know, we talked about this last, that was in August or July? Can't remember, anyway. So we have more, we have the head, head edited the whole ADAPT program here, and so questions for ADAPT?
I'm happy to make a little bit of an opening.
Okay, yeah, sure, open and comment. You bet, Greg.
First of all, thank you for holding me. I'm Greg Brigham, I'm the CEO of ADAPT, integrated healthcare. We're the CMHP for Curry, and so appreciate the attention and investment that the administration and the community members are putting into looking at mental health. It's important to everyone, acutely important at times, but it's important nonetheless all the time. We're entrusted with precious resources to deliver on that mission, we're accountable to everybody in this room, as well as all the citizens of Curry and the state and lots of other people. You know, we welcome that amount of accountability, we take the mission very seriously. ADAPT is a nonprofit, it's been around about 50 years. We do substitutes disorder treatment, mental health treatment, and primary care. Those are, we're a service organization. We're a nonprofit, we're a safety net program. Our main mission is to serve people that are underserved or would not be served due to financial resources otherwise. So we don't just turn away from ADAPT on the basis of, okay. So we've been in Curry County for about a year and a half, just over that. We started in January of '22 with the public health mission, so we're a work in progress, I would say. I think Jerry reported last time we're here, it may have changed a little bit, it changes rapidly, number of employees. We have about 43 people either working, a little over 40 working in the county and at least one remote person that's working via telehealth currently. So about 43 people kind of boots on the ground, providing services or directly interacting with folks in the county.
We have a total of three out of four here.
Three out of three, so 40 on the ground. We have about three offers out right now, I think, so the number moves quickly. We're about 11 short still that we're actively recruiting for that are, you know, in our initial plan for what we estimate we need to meet our requirements in the county. I think the need is much greater than that and sort of maybe, you know, that would be something we'll be visiting other resources. So we have strong support from both CCOs, they've been very helpful in bringing us into the role of the CMHP and supporting us with regular relationship with them. They, they support a lot of the services we're providing, and they're very good and strong partners. They're also very invested, obviously, in the health of residents of Curry County. They do a lot of the planning and assessment for that work, and they're essential partners. The state is also deeply involved in what we do, and they can speak for themselves, but, you know, they do contract with us for services, they monitor our progress, they visit us and audit us for compliance with state regulations and statutes and rules. There are various organizations, either them or the state directly or through consultants that they work with, that measure the quality of fidelity programs like the ACT program and ESA, and, you know, some of these specialty programs that have to be certified independently. So strong, strong and frequent interaction with OHA. We've, you know, we have a fully staffed mobile crisis team, for example, some things, you know, that's, I'll hold that out as something that's a very good resource. We weren't sure we'd be this far a year and a half. It's really, you know, the way we look at it and the decision process we went through to come to Curry County is we look at it as a decades-long process to really build the kind of infrastructure and workforce that's needed to meet the requirements of the community. Like I said, we're a little over 18 months into that, so we're not there, but we're invested for the long term. We're, you know, we've purchased millions of dollars in property that, you know, will, you know, that's a 30-year investment in itself. We are also seeking other resources to bring to Curry County, and Jerry is very prolific at scanning the environment and seeing, you know, what opportunities might be out there on the federal and state level of resources that we might be able to bring into Curry County. I should mention also that all of the, all of the resources we get for Curry County are used in Curry County, with the exception of some shared administrative things. So for example, when we assumed the role of CMHP in Curry County, we didn't start a new CMHP, we added that to the existing CMHP. The way it's organized is, you know, one or more local mental health authority can come together and, you know, have a CMHP. So that was a big advantage for Curry County, because that brought a lot of infrastructure that we already had, so we already had a community mental health program director, for example, and we already had a lot of the oversight capacity we needed to build mobile crisis and ACT teams and ESA programs and all these specialized kind of services. But they still have to be certified in Curry County, so we don't get a pass on that. So the ACT team in Curry County has to meet all of the ACT team requirements to be certified in Curry County. It doesn't, we can't use the ACT team that we have in Douglas to meet that requirement. So there are some advantages, but they are also limited. There are things that have to be done uniquely here. Those things, some of those fidelity programs, they're going to be a longer haul to bring online, so they're providing services now, we're providing ACT services, but not in a certified ACT program. That's basically done with a scoring model and a required, you know, things like staff turnover, having a number of dedicated specialty staff, all those things go into the score. So we, our process with that is to build the team that's needed to meet the requirements. Then we would enter a one-year provisional period, and at the end of that provisional period, if we still meet the requirements, we get a high enough score, we would become certified ACT team. To my knowledge, that's never happened in Curry County for some very real barriers. You know, there's just economies of scale that have to be met to, to do a lot of those things and have the specialty providers and the dedicated providers. We'll get there, you know, we're going, we're going to do it. I'm not saying we won't do it, but that's like an example of a program that is going to take years and years to actually get where we need to go.
And what program? You're using ACT, is that, I don't know.
Yeah.
ACT?
Yes, sort of community treatment, a sort of community treatment.
A sort of community.
It's a, it's a program for sort of the most impaired folks with severe persisting mental illness in the community. It's limited by, you can have, for example, and I should be careful because I'm, Jerry, Jerry, I'm gonna let you be my back check here. So I'm gonna apologize ahead of time if I get something wrong, because I'm probably getting a little more technical than I'm actually able to do, but for example, they have to have like a 1 to 10 staff rate, staff to client ratio. So, you know, if you're gonna have 50 people in the ACT team, you've got to have five staff members. Then there are specific roles, like the medical provider, a nurse, and so on. They have to have their own crisis function within that team. So anyway, it's just something that takes many years to bring online and bring skills. So in our other experience, some of the early goals we had that I wouldn't say we still have not met here, we'd like to get to open access, so that's the model we use in Douglas County, where we've been doing it a little longer, we have some better economies of. We have some better economies of scale. Essentially, that way, the way that works is anybody can drop in any, anytime during business hours, be seen and started as a new patient. So it's just open access. That's our goal, is to have that here. We may not be able to have that in every community because you, you have to have staff like there, present and not doing anything so they can attend to this person. And you do need a certain amount of demand for service to be able to do that. We're pretty confident we can do that in, you know, in a couple of communities, probably not in Port Orford. That's probably going to be more by appointment. You know, we bought the building in Port Orford. I know that's come up before and it's an area of high interest. And it's actually very helpful to me personally, I'll just say, to get that feedback from the community and hear when people are feeling a sense of urgency about something so we can reprioritize what we're doing. But anyway, we bought the building there to operate it. We've been operating it more on a appointment basis or to operate out of it to provide services in the community and also seat people there, but not to open the doors to the public because mainly out of safety concerns. So we have one full-time person operating out there, but we don't feel we can have the doors open to the public without at least two people present. And, you know, just like law enforcement, we're in some ways a first responder. A lot of risks, there's a lot of risk everywhere. There's a lot of risk in Curry County. There's a lot of potentially dangerous stuff going on out there all the time. That risk gets concentrated with the police, you know, they're gonna go and encounter this in a much higher degree than, you know, most people living in the, in the county. And frankly, mental health does as well. We deploy when people are in crisis, they're unstable, they're unsafe themselves or maybe others in the community. And they also come to us in that state. So for the safety of our staff, we have minimum thresholds we have to meet just to be able to have the doors open. And, but anyway, my point with that is just that because Port Orford is smaller, it's taken us a little longer to work out the economies of scale. But we have some staff already hired from there. We have the positions open now and we're actively recruiting for the staff that will need to open that office up for regular business hours, whatever those end up being. We just have to figure out where our coverage can be best. It'll be, I think, initially a meeting the minimum threshold of having two people present to have a safe environment. When you have that kind of situation, if one person's out, now you've only got one. So it does, we'd like to get above that so that we can be reliably open so that people can count on it.
Also, there are existing staff members we have working out of there and another staff member comes in every week. Their isn't as a base of operations. Their programs go to where people are. So they don't just sit in the office. Our one person lives in Bandon and she uses that as her office when she needs to stop in to work or meet with a client in North County in an office. But most of the time, she's going to other parts of the county, working with a multi-disciplinary team, or she's going to someone's home or, or something like that. So she's not there very often, but she does touch base there. And we have another staff member, case manager, who comes up every Thursday. And she does the same thing. She goes in, she has a computer there, an office she can work out of and meet with somebody. But often, she's going to somebody's house, up on the river or something. And, and that's just, so those two actually don't count towards that safety threshold. It really, for them, is just a base of operations currently.
So we're getting, I don't know, we're supposed to be doing introductory comments here. We're getting a little bit of a lead, but we know that's a point of contention. We know that we're not delivering to Port Orford at the level that we should and we want to. You know, we're doing the sort of, I'm telling you insider sausage making kind of stuff, but when a member of the community needs a service and they look to us, this doesn't matter, none of this matters. What matters is whether we're there to serve or not. And our goal is, is to be there. You know, and we're not there in other ways as well. So in terms of customer service, for example, we're still building out the infrastructure, making, you know, we're providing thousands of services to hundreds of people, but we're still short of the need. And so, you know, I'd like to be more like a less swap. You know, when you pull up, somebody is on it, they're gonna come out to your car and say, hey, what can I do for you? I don't know if we'll get quite there, but, but, you know, I just want to say that that is our model, you know? We look at the community as, I think, servant leaders, if those of us are in leadership positions. We are servants of the community. The community has, and commissioners and other important stakeholders have every right to expect more from us and we're gonna do our best to deliver it. And I think, you know, we've done this before. We know how to do it, but it does take time. And it is, it's a little other. You know, the sausage making process, the first couple of years, as you're, you're having areas where you're not meeting demand, I know we have at least one school district representative, made me think of that, when we, we did this process previously in Douglas County. That was one of the areas, I mean, we scanned the environment and said, kind of, what's on fire here? Not literally like you guys have to deal with, but figuratively. And schools was one of those. They just were dealing with a lot of behaviors. They didn't really quite know how to interact with us. They weren't getting what they felt they needed. And, you know, within a couple of years, we were able to work out a process where we put a school-based therapist in every school that wanted one. Not full-time necessarily.
I'll text for you.
Yeah. You know, that's, that's the kind of conversation we want to have. So, but it is, you know, we need to recruit people and have the right people and not everybody's right to be in a school setting. It's complicated, you know, schools are a whole different, like, culture than mental health is. And so we need people that can be successful in both, but, you know, that's our vision. That's where we want to get to. And that's not like way down the road. That's as we've met our basic statutory requirements, we can start expanding and, you know, create our service areas. But anyway, we definitely want to get together and talk about that. Yes.
I have a question. This phrase you use, we exist to serve the underserved.
Yeah.
That's a big word, underserved. Because, you know, if I think of a mental health crisis, I think of somebody that's, you know, maybe they're doing a Unipol or Bipol or whatever thing. And it's right now. And who cares whether they have insurance, no insurance or whatever? How, ability to pay is not the issue. The issue is they need to talk to a mental health person. So I, I guess that's my big question. And under that would be what insurance programs do you exist, do you help, do you encourage? Could you address that a little bit?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. So for crisis services, there's, there's no fee. It doesn't matter whether you have insurance, you don't have insurance, you know, that's not the kind of service. So when I say the underserved, you know, I mean, as an organization, that's how we were built as a safety net. So our mission actually is to provide world-class primary care, substitutes and mental health services to the communities that we serve. And the reason we phrase it like that is that we want to have a high quality standard of care. So we want to be a place where anyone would feel comfortable with our facilities, with our staff receiving their care. But we were built as a nonprofit and originally as, you know, serving the underserved. But we, most people in Oregon now have some form of coverage. There's a high percentage of people that have Oregon Health Plans. So we work with the state directly for FIPA service folks that, you know, aren't in one of the CCOs. But most people should be in a CCO. And so All Care and Advanced Health represented here today, they insure a lot of the county. And of course, we have close agreements with them. And we're, we're responsible to them to meet the members of their, members, the members of their CCO. So they have defined benefits that are required. The CCOs are required to provide that. We do it for.
What does All Care, what does that mean?
So All Care is a coordinated, let All Care speak for themselves.
All Care is a coordinated care organization. So the Medicaid benefit is, goes from the federal government to the state and the state then sending spending for medical care out to the coordinated care organizations across the state. So All Care covers Jackson, Joseph and Curry and part of Douglas County and provides coverage to individuals who have Oregon Health Plan. And then Advanced Health, let Care speak for them.
Yeah, same, same type of organization, coordinated care organization, serving Medicaid populations and we are ICUs and we share population care in Curry as well with All Care.
So is Coast Community Health, is that a CCO too or no?
No, no. We are FQHC. So, I'll pay it, I'll pay it. Nonprofit funded through HRSA.
So can, can it apples sapples or?
No.
No.
From operational, from boots on the ground, if I get a client that comes to me and they're advanced health and in their homes, I make a referral to their intensive care coordination team or I make a, I'm gonna call it up through service, depending on how independent a person is, to ask for additional resources to support their social determinants of health, which is anything outside of doctors out there. The doctor can write a script and tell you to exercise more and don't smoke and, you know, reduce your salt in cake. But then there's a lot of other things that happen if people are in their life and affect their health here that doesn't happen in the doctors out there. The CCO can help people navigate as well as a nonprofit like ours can help people navigate by making referrals to the CCO. If the organization has a special risk, it's on stage and the CCO can help.
To really boil it down, a CCO is like a health insurance company and a federally called by health center is a clinic with primary caregivers.
Okay, right. I would also like to say that the CCO is a justice, like I came from a hospital study for 20 years, I was a personalized care hospital. And I came to Advanced Health and for the first few, I half forgot that I was living in a first company. I literally felt like I was Santa Claus out there trying to build services and look for gaps in services and how we could meet those gaps and find funding for individuals. So I kind of feel like I'm a coordinator between the state and the FQHCs, work with Waterfall, a local ICUs, to help set up a psychiatric clinic, an independent psychiatric clinic. So I'm looking at the big picture always in these areas to see who I can bring together and which funds can go with which parties to make the biggest impacts. And so for me, I really feel more of a, I really feel more of a, you know, bring your problems and let's talk about the system and then share something.
All right. So Jerry, you got a question?
Well, I was just gonna say that what's different in Oregon under that waiver is that rather than having a state program that just administers Medicaid benefit across the whole state, we have local CCOs that are managed locally, that manage that across the whole state. So in Curry County, there's two CCOs and everybody who's on OHP, almost everybody, is in one of those two CCOs. They get to choose which one they're in. And so if you go to a different county, some counties will have one, some counties will have two CCOs. But they are, they are like the insurance company, but like Carol was saying, they're local. So they have local advisory councils, they have local management and they work out to, kind of work out what their local benefit's gonna be. So they're working with providers like Coast or like Adapt or different providers order to provide, you know, what kind of services we're gonna have available for our members.
Does CTO stand for?
CCO.
Community care organization.
Coordinated care organization.
Oh, CCO.
And we also run the Systems of Care. I just want to point that out. The Systems of Care is like Pamela is my counterpart at NSC, she's the manager and manages the System of Care. And that's a whole series of meetings and groups and highly recommend participation in those where you bring barriers, needs, and it doesn't have to be for the Medicaid population. And we work heavily with dental service needs and that type of thing. So when you have a barrier in the community, you take the Systems of Care Council and then they work all the way up to the state level to try to get some of that, the needs next.
So I think, so I appreciate the explanation. I really do. But I can tell you that I had a community member reach out to me in South County. He went to Adapt. He and his wife were having a very significant mental health crisis. It was immediate. When he went there, he was denied care for not having the right insurance. And he offered to pay in cash and was again denied. And he ended up going to Crescent City for help. And then another community member reached out to me regarding a situation with a juvenile son who was having a very significant mental health crisis. They went into Adapt and were denied care because they had the wrong insurance and they ended up going to ICUs Bay. So then those were immediate needs.
Let me just make one more comment to finish this. I definitely want to come back to that. So we also accept private insurance and for people that are self-insured, if they're above, you know, multiples of the federal income level and they want to pay, there's sliding fee scales and payment plans. But with private insurance, we have to credential with each of those to be an in-network provider. So we do, we seek that. So for any insurance plan that people might have in the community, we seek to become a network provider so they will get their full benefit with us. But that's a process between us and private payers and, so it is possible someone would come in, we'd be an out-of-network provider and their insurance may or may not cover a portion of the payment, but probably not as much as it would with an in-network provider. So just, I just wanted to finish off with there's that other kind of class of people.
But would that, would that impact their ability to receive care?
It should not.
It sounds like.
Yeah, let me come back to that. So that should not happen. What you're telling us about is a failure in our system. I mean, I'd want to investigate it and verify the facts and know more about it before I could comment on it. We do have a compliance department. Those are both complaints. I don't know if it's, if they're similar, but I got one from Commissioner Truss as well that we are, we've currently initiated investigation. So they can make a complaint. They can just say, I want to complain to any staff member. They can contact Adapt with that. I think we're balancing when to roll this out, but we'll also have a complaint link on the website. So there's kind of two ways that we manage these kinds of problems is when something comes up and, you know, there's a complaint or a failure on our part to meet it, we have a management response to that. So Jerry and, and Sherry Barnes are all those folks. They're gonna go to the managers, go to the staff, try to find out what happened. They're gonna look in the electronic medical record. But we also have an independent compliance department. And so those, both of those would meet the threshold of saying, you know, this should be a grievance. And they have a team of dedicated investigators that will look into that. They'll contact those community members if they're willing to be contacted and they'll, you know, issue a formal, they'll do a formal investigation and issue a formal report. So that should never happen. That, you know, either the staff member that was dealing with them was not sufficiently trained, there was some kind of misunderstanding. I, I think I mentioned earlier when I said, we're trying to get to the less swap model of customer service. We're not there. I mean, I, I think these are the kinds of things we're hearing from time to time. And it's also a very valuable part of this process because as these get surfaced, you know, we can track them down. So I don't, of course, we're entrusted that in here, but if those individuals are willing to give us names, that really helps us because there is a, you know, sometimes there's just like a general complaint. It's very hard for us to track that down. But when there are specifics like that, that should never happen.
And Commissioner Truss may have relayed that information, it may be the same, same incident. And I certainly understand, there's always two sides to everything and I can, and I understand the context of it, but, but when I do hear that, it is concerning to me. And, and again, I, I want to make a real point of emphasis here, which is making sure that people in our community have a voice and can be heard.
One of the, so as we, we want to obviously navigate the LMHA conversation, one thing that you brought up, Greg, I just, for a little more clarification. So on the, can you just, can you clear the, because one of the common themes that we get often is that it's very limited to access. You know, if you don't have OHP or Medicare, you can't get services from Adapt. And there, I mean, the people, it's a common theme of conversation that comes up. So can you just inform us, what insurances do you accept currently?
No, I, I can't, I would be mistaken, but I'm happy to get you that information. I just don't know the current status of, but there's more to that conversation that I found to put in there. So there are also licensure requirements for various payers, like Medicare, for example, requires that we have a licensed therapist provide services for them. And because we're a certified female health program and, and we are under the state process for mental health services even outside of that, we can bring, say, masters-level trained mental health therapists in and they can provide services for, you know, All Care's members and for Advanced Health members. But Medicare won't pay those providers because they require licensure. There are not enough licensed people to go. around. And so that's always an issue. And insurance companies, many insurance companies have the same requirements. So they may be coming into us, showing us their insurance, and we say, we don't have a licensed provider available for you that meets your insurance requirements. That means that they, they wouldn't pay. So the individual would then be responsible for payment of their own services and on their income. So if their income is lower, they may not. But, so, so it is a little more complicated than just saying no.
Well, this is like.
But they should still be offered services. It's just that.
Yeah, that's the part I'm having trouble with.
That's why it disconnects.
Because you just, you just said that they wouldn't be.
So there are services that don't require insurance. So crisis, for example, this has.
So, so, so the correct, the correct definition would be that in some cases, we might be able to provide some limited services to certain people.
So we can always provide.
Now, those people were both willing to pay. They're willing to pay in cash, but they were turned away.
They should have been served. If they're willing to pay in cash, you know, that's a legitimate complaint. They should have been served. What I was saying is that there can be a case where they have financial exposure because we don't have a licensed therapist for them. In those cases, though, our proper response would be to help them locate a place to get services and to the degree possible, do a handoff to them. So I'm not making an excuse for those situations that were brought up. There's not an excuse. But I also don't want to say, you know, we can provide the service on every insurance plan out there. That's just not the case. Now, that's for any organization.
Oh, just a second. Okay, okay, go ahead. We got a couple of questions from the audience.
One other follow-up, earlier about, so the, the CMHP, trying to understand the structure a little bit. The CMHP has been combined with Douglas's CMHP direct. So kind of under the same umbrella, which affords for collateral and some of the administrative roles and things of that nature. Does, one thing I gotta just kind of have at least clear up in my head is, is Adapt also the LMHA for Curry as well as the CMHP?
Yes.
So, okay. And, and, okay, that makes sense. And so would, so the, we've had some dialogue about like. I'm sorry. I want to make sure this goes. I, I was under the impression that the state was the LM.
No.
Was the.
They handed it to them.
Authority.
So the county returned the LMHA to the state. This was some, the spring, I guess, of twenty twenty one.
Twenty twenty one, yes.
And the state, well, so first of all, to come into Douglas County, or to come into Curry County and make the kind of investment we knew we would need to make and enter into this decades-long process, we had a couple, we were asked to come and consider this. The current provider was leaving. And we were approached by the coordinated care organizations, OHA, and the commissioners. And we had a couple of conditions that we required to be able to do that. Really two conditions. One was that we would be the LMHA, which would require the county to turn it back to the state and the state to assign it to the debt. And then also, we needed to have suitable contracts with the two CCOs that provided, had the membership in this county. And so both of those things were agreed upon. And that's how I think we got a little bit of a off-footing in the first meeting is, so those were, we'd just been buried out there with that. And so during that process, for example, there were some of the current commissioners at that time who didn't really want to do that. And so they pulled back and said, well, we don't really want to turn over the LMHA. And we were very clear, we understand that certainly, but that's a condition for us to make the investments we need to make. And then there was agreement on it. So going forward, you know, we've just tried to be very clear on that so it doesn't get fuzzy, but.
That, that's fine. I, I didn't realize that they had actually came through. Because we were under the impression in multiple conversations with other folks that the state still maintained it, but if it got handed over, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter to us. But I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. So, yeah, so that's the current state of things.
Cool. So, yeah, so that was very unclear to me, too. I didn't even know that you could be your own oversight. I didn't know that could actually happen. So, but does that also mean that, because they're combined, and then you have the, you have also the LMHA, that you also oversee the advisory boards for public health, I mean, for mental health and addictions?
So in the, in the model where the county has the LMHA, I'm gonna speak to my understanding of it. I don't, don't profess to be an expert on this. But it's, it's, there are some counties where the county is both the LMHA and the service provider.
Yes.
They have their own health there. So.
Curry used to be like that circuit two thousand thirteen.
Douglas County was like that, too. So it's not unusual for the LMHA to be with the same entity that is also a community health provider. That's, you know, common statement in counties. Under the rules, the OARs, and there's a formatting problem with that. That's why I think a lot of people never come up with it. They do a search of the rules, they don't find it. But in the rule that defines who can be an LMHA, there's a formatting problem. So you get to like item, I'm gonna provide you a copy of this outside of the meeting.
I think it's been provided.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, you know, you get to item A and then a sentence or two into it, you get item nine. Then you go to the next one, there's another item nine. So frequently it's missed. But that rule was changed in two thousand sixteen to allow for a nonprofit or, or private or nonprofit organizations board to serve as an LMHA.
Yeah.
And that's the year we took over the community mental health program in Douglas County. I wasn't aware that that rule developed then, but when we went to trace it back to, to your point, we saw that that was two thousand sixteen that the filing was made. And we were informed at that time that we were the LMHA for, for Douglas County. And so that's the way we're used to doing it. We know how to do it. You know, that's the model we wanted coming here because, you know, it's, it's a big job.
Yeah. I think the, the, where, it, where it has a little bit of a difference is, in my head, is when the county has an LMHA and they're also the provider, that LMHA is answerable to the public. Whereas the LMHA is currently answerable to your appointed board.
That's true.
And I think that's the, a big difference in, in the two models that has to be kind of considered. But, go ahead.
You also asked about the committee. So.
Yes.
I think my preference was not to get too far in the weeds on that because I'm still asking our council to dig in and look at rule changes and make sure that we're clear. But anyway, our CMHP certification.
Can we, can we just cut in for one second? We just have a poll over and say, well, it's bigger, it's a, we need to. So just so everybody understands that we're doing, that every, most, much of the county is covered by individual fire districts. The parts that aren't called the unprotected fire districts, and the authorized representatives to, to request assistance for that is the county commissioners. So I'm asking for the county commissioners to resolve right now to ask for assistance from the state fire marshal's office regarding the unprotected areas in Curry County in relation to that. And I'll fire at this time.
So we go into a regular board meeting?
So we're gonna do it. So we're gonna, we're gonna pause the workshop. We're gonna go into an emergency meeting. And once you announce the emergency meeting, I will make a motion that Ted just made.
Okay, so we're gonna take a break on this. It is a workshop, and we're gonna go into emergency meeting. And it's official. And I'll entertain a motion to provide.
I would like a motion, I would like a motion from the, from the authorized representatives of the unprotected fire areas in Curry County in relation to flat fire. Those that authorized representatives are, are the county commissioners to request assistance from the New Orleans State Fire Marshal at this time.
Okay, Natasha is busy writing that. You got that motion, Natasha?
Yes, sir.
All right. So I'll make that motion. A second. Got a motion in a second. Any other question, comment? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. I say yes. Motion carries three to zero.
I think we can conclude the emergency meeting.
Yeah, we can. Continue. That meeting is closed. We're back into, and thank you for your patience. Yeah.
A little interruption?
Yeah.
It said luckily we were all together. So go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah. So anyway, our, our CMHP certification, we are expecting an OHA visit in the summer of two thousand twenty four. So that'll be the next time. We're coming with that. For those committees that, that Community Mental Health Advisory Committee and the plan that's required under the old LMHA, I'm not sure that those are even still active. So we're, we're researching those. But the way we met them in Douglas County was working with the CCO. They do a, you know, community health assessment. They develop a community health improvement plan. We are required to participate in those and do so, you know, willingly and gladly as well. And we meet that requirement basically through the CCOs, CAC, and community assessment, and community health improvement plan. So basically, the mental health is, is integrated into that. And I'm pretty sure they're on a five-year cycle. So we will basically have to have this resolved and detailed for Curry County by next summer. You know, we'll have to have a settled plan for how this is working. Like I said, that's what we ended up doing in Douglas. It was reviewed, the previous review, and it was approved as meeting the current owners.
Additionally, we also work with Lipsec, which has a hero health and housing committee. There's also a requirement to work with that group. And we also work with, in Douglas County, we'll work with the CCO to help develop their comprehensive data for health plans. So all those pieces together help us then work on each that we need for our.
So a lot of, a lot of this has changed with the advent of CCOs. So, you know, more and more, they could probably, more and more is being handed to the CCOs to be responsible for the system. But this is one where I think it does end up with much better integrated kind of plan.
I think, so we had two questions from the audience prior to this. So we're gonna go with the next.
Connie has one.
This gentleman was next, and then Connie.
Okay. I'm Hal Lowery. I work for Coast Community. Dr. Brigham, don't take this personally. I, I came down here to my little town, Port Orford. So hold your feet to the fire. We, I polled my staff, which involves three MSWs who do counseling, and a, a community group we have called Neighbor to Neighbor, who is trying to figure out solutions for the homeless problem we have, everybody has. And we, for a head count of people that we might have referred to Adapt if, if, if we could. And it came to forty-four people. Some of them are homeless. We have an outreach program, as you probably know, who deals primarily with people who are down and out and homeless and signs them up for programs. A lot of these people have been signed up for services with OHP. There's a lot of them. And they're all ages. Most of them have alcohol or drug program, uh, problems, addiction problems. Some of them have mental, mental health problems. It's a big issue that we're working on. I have worked at Coast Community since the beginning, in Port Orford, when they decided to put in a satellite clinic and they needed somebody. And I realized that due to many things, geography, staffing is really difficult. I kind of almost disagree with you a little bit. We, our county is a long string bean separated by, you know, the Pacific Ocean on one side and the mountains on the other side, and one dangerous road up and down the whole thing, one-on-one. And so expecting people who really don't want the services to be, you know, and we have to kind of work on them to agree to get addiction services, and then tell them they gotta go down the road twenty-five miles and they don't have transportation and that we can't just send them down there. We have to escort somebody. It just doesn't work. I would read you from your website, because it came up earlier. At Adapt Integrated Healthcare, we championed the removal of barriers to healthcare across southwest Oregon to ensure everyone can attain their optimum health regardless of ability to pay. That's right. The first paragraph on Adapt's website. And they list, Port Orford is a functioning clinic by appointment only. But I live in Port Orford and I drive by it every day to work. And there's, it's, it looks defunct. It doesn't look like there's anybody there. There's a white car parked in the parking lot that never moves, and the guy next door parks his rusty pickup truck in the parking lot. And there just doesn't seem to be much activity. My staff says, my Jenny Pugh, who came from the, the prior community program, says that it's just really hard to get people services through Adapt. And we're often told, well, you know, go to Coos Bay or go to, you know, go to Gold Beach. And it, it just strikes me as strange that you say you have forty-three staff members in Curry, yet we really don't feel like we have any services in Port Orford. And we need them. We need them. So my questions that, that, and if you want to see my list, you can. It's just initials. But it's, it's just a head count, more or less. But my questions are, you know, you must get funding from the state. And I'm curious, what is your, is your, your funding capitated? Or is it a chunk every year? And how much is it? Can you share that? And I also wonder how many appointments have been recorded at Port Orford? Because from our window, it's, you're non-accessible. So I'll stop.
Thanks for the feedback. I mean, it's not pleasant. I'll need names if I'm gonna track those things down. So I would say offline, if we could talk, I definitely want to look into those because I think I've already really addressed this in our intentions to open it. I would say back to you, your organization, how long has it taken you to bring public health up to full staffing?
It's impossible. It's, we have a heck of a time with staffing.
So why would you expect us to have it done in eighteen months?
Well, I just, just when you say you have forty-three people in Curry.
Why are there forty-three? I don't just say that.
Why couldn't you send us a couple?
I have people working out of that office. I've already kind of answered all this. So I would say, no, I'm happy to hear complaints of people not happy, but I want to hear them because it'll make us better. And we do feel responsible for this. But we also need the support of everyone in this room. We, you know, the commissioners are pivotal to our success, in my opinion. And so I respect their, you know, felt need to, you know, know more and to understand what's going on, to respond to the community, and yours as well. I mean, I want to know that. I don't, you know, I'm not enjoying it at the moment. But it's important information. But I also do think, you know, we need to support the schools of Coast, of the commissioners, of the CCOs. This is a community thing. And, you know, we've taken it on and we're gonna take the heat. We knew that coming in. That's why we needed certain assurances. We knew we would take hits to reputation. We knew that we would have difficult conversations, and we're willing to have those. And this, you know, this is one of them. So.
So I would say, just real quickly, when you talk about the forty-three staff, the CMHP is required to take things in priority. The number one priority is crisis. Crisis teaming is the highest priority that we have to do. We have all the positions filled for the crisis team except one. But we consider that fully staffed. Remember, you're gonna have a position or two open up. So that team is fully responsive to the whole camp. And the second is fidelity programs, which you don't get to see much of fidelity programs. But when you think about a fidelity program, it's not a person providing a service. The AP team is a multidisciplinary team that includes a psychiatric provider, a therapist, a peer, a case manager, halftime CADC, which is an alcohol and drug counselor. And they only work with that population that qualifies for the AP team, for example. And the ESAP program has like three people that just work with that population. So these fidelity programs, which are required, we're not quite there yet. But we have a couple of them that are about ready to go into provisions. But we have a couple of them that are about ready to go into provisional, provisional status. Two more that need two staff that recently had a turnover, and another one that needs three staff, same staff or shared between two programs. So if we get two and a half staff, those two are ready to go. But those are only gonna serve the people that are in those programs. And that's required in the fidelity program. You're not allowed to take a person for an ACT program and say, hey, we gotta get somebody in here to give therapy for somebody who's just walked in the door. You're not allowed to do that in fidelity programs. So all these programs we're talking about getting established are required to have set aside staff participate in that program. So most of the staff that we have are working on these pieces that we're talking about that are required. And then after we do that is our therapy. And we can do that for youth, families, and adults. We don't have very many people doing just therapy. So we have a little bit of case management, a little bit of therapist, but that's the piece we need to work on next, is getting capacity for that. Our people doing this are, one is in Gold Beach, one is in Brooklyn, doing this all the time, therapists. We don't have an extra person put in Port Orford right now for that service, but we're working on it. We have, in order to open that office, it's not about having a person behind the desk. We call them access coordinators. They work on intake and paperwork. If we were to do that to somebody, put them in that office by themselves, with the two staff I described who've come and go all day long, they would be vulnerable and they wouldn't be able to do very much for somebody who came in in a crisis. So in order to open the office, we need a person there who is at least a case manager, who has crisis experience, and a therapist who can provide some service. So that's what we need. And it's, it's not just a matter of willpower or decision. If it were that, we would already have done it. I, I'll tell you that when starting the CMHP in Curry County, it's a challenge to have two offices that we're trying to staff. Normally a CMHP, even with the higher population that we have here, wouldn't have two offices they're trying to staff and provide access to. They would start with one. And then when they got everything up to speed, everything I described, then they would start looking at satellite offices. We're not able to do that here. We need to have these two offices going, and we'd love to have a third, but it's a much higher, harder lift to do that. And so, you know, I feel your pain. I've been proposing trying to have that for, we bought the building, that's our first building we purchased, because we knew we wanted to have something in Port Orford. Unfortunately, we also knew it was probably gonna be the last one that we opened because we have to get these other two offices up to speed. So I feel your pain. I think barriers are, they're a real challenge for everybody, so.
They are, and I don't mean to really point fingers. But I would say if this security issue is an issue, come to our house. We have room, we have a gorgeous clinic there. We've got extra exam rooms. Schedule appointments, let us schedule appointments for addiction therapy or for mental health. We don't have, we had a psychiatric nurse practitioner that we trained, and she spent a year or so with us, and we really miss her. We don't have anybody that can manage medications, and neither do you, I know.
No, we didn't.
So I've been doing it. It's hard to staff all up and down the coast, all around the country, actually, for healthcare. But I, I just think we ought to be able to work it out. And if you can't use your building because you need more than one person, we have a whole busy clinic that's open five days a week that you could, I'm sure I could set it up so you could have somebody from your office see patients in private with sound machines in our office.
What we were doing last year with your clinic, because we met with your team, I think you were even there, we set up so that your staff could do the intake packets, and we have a staff member coming by once a week, get those picked up, get the process started. And services, we can provide that via telehealth if the person on the other side, the patient, client, is comfortable with that and feel like it'll be effective. And I don't know what happened in the breakdown with that, but always a turnover happened, and that process apparently doesn't exist anymore.
So I think we should be, you know, strong partners, obviously.
I agree.
We're towards the same goals, often with the same folks, and so, you know, let's get our teams together and get it better. I don't know what logistical complications there might be with what you're suggesting, but I appreciate the generous offer. We should definitely explore it. We do place people in other organizations. You mentioned the schools earlier, and we do that all the time. It's maybe a little more complicated being in another organization's healthcare environment, so I'm sure there's a regulatory person that could tell me more about why, you know, we shouldn't make too many promises. But that's a generous offer, and I think we should really explore it.
See, this is, this is what I like. Because I mean, it was some, there were some tough questions, and, but we, you came together. See, that's, we don't ever want to get to that point where, you know.
I want to work, we want to work with you, we really do. Everybody needs you. I looked at your sign across the street and go, oh, John, I wish they were open.
I do want to say this also, that I think we have a great staff. You know, we probably have some people that haven't followed what they should have done and will need to retrain or re-correct. But I'm frankly pretty proud of what we've done in Curry County and the work that Jerry's done and Cherie. I mean, it's, it's not a small thing, what they've accomplished in just 18 months, so. Anyway, so, you know, I don't mean to get defensive, but I do feel, in addition to receiving feedback and being held accountable to the community, I also feel a need to kind of carry the banner for the folks that are out there doing a very, very hard job. You know, I came from a staff meeting yesterday where we've had a person bring a gun into our facility and threaten themselves in the parking lot. It was very traumatic for the staff. You know, this is just stuff they're dealing with all the time, so it's, you know. I know I wouldn't want to, I feel I would be remiss without saying that we have some very fine people in Curry County doing some important work, and we're grateful for their service.
Social Corona.
I could be the last one to speak.
Go ahead, Jeremy. Is it Beth?
You, you said that the crisis team is one of those top priority things that you guys work on. How many staff members do you have on the crisis team?
I don't have the list.
I do actually have that in the car, but I don't have it with me. But it's, I want to say it's, I better not say.
And of that team, at least in my experience so far, they are really good at responding some of the time? Is it, is it an expectation that if they are called upon there to respond in person? Recently, what we have seen of an increase up here is someone will be acutely in crisis, and there's some criminal element to it, but it's a nuisance crime, trespassing, stuff like that. And oftentimes, the response that officers or deputies are giving are, we'll get them to the jail and we'll respond there. So my, my concern with that is now we're criminalizing mental health. And the jails aren't against it. So, Jeremy, we're talking about two people, I mean, right now about that. And it's, it's a real evolving door of them coming in out of jail. So is there something that I can bring back to my staff that maybe they need to call somebody else? Do they?
Yeah, so my thought, you get either David or Cherie involved in that process. Anyway, they should be responding. There is a criteria for mobile crisis that has to kind of be met for them to respond in the community. I don't know if that's entering into these situations, but we do have mobile crisis 24/7. But it's not in Curry County because of the resource limitations. We don't have staff awake and sitting there 24 hours a day, ready to deploy. So they're on, they're on call certain hours to go into the community. So there can be, you know, some limitations there, delays that could happen. But it doesn't sound like it's working the way it should, so we'll, we'll circle back on.
Well, I think that decision about trying to interact with them at the jail, often the hospital is the one that they'll interact with because they're often as a medical component. And this is one of the things Jeremy and I were talking about before the meeting is, you know, do we always have to like, there's somebody who's making a decision that's easier or better in some way to have a person at the jail. And that's because of a gap that exists around holds and residential kind of holding-type facilities, not just in Curry County, but across all of southwest Oregon. So we're gonna have to work on that so that we can respond in the community. And we'll work on that.
But we agree, we don't want to escalate something to go to jail if it could be prevented.
And my, my thinking, and maybe it's short sighted, is maybe ADAPT's got three buildings that they own. Maybe there's somebody that will respond to, you know, the ADAPT building and will be in the officer's secret room there, they don't have their treatment there, instead of let's put them in jail and have it continue this whole process.
No, we'd like to avoid the bookings too, if we can. You know, in Douglas County, where we've been doing it longer and we're better resourced, we've worked out with, with the local police to also be dispatched so that we can, if it's clearly a mental health situation, we can be dispatched either along with or in place of law enforcement. But that requires, you know, people being awake and available and ready, you know, at that, during those hours.
It also took time to develop trust, so we didn't just do that. It's the code deployments, we worked on it over a period.
We did ride longs and that sort of thing. We'd be happy to do that, Jeremy.
Okay, Greg, Beth has another question.
I just have a comment and then a question. But I wanted to guess down really quickly, memorably, in Curry County. Some of you in the room have been in, either working alongside or with public or mental health. A lot of people have not in Curry County, so there's some nervous. And Toon and Jay, I think, is the only commissioner that has some inkling of what it was like when we had public and mental health under our authority in Curry. So I want to take us back to those days, and if you had any awareness at all, we were always scrambling to meet demand. We were dropping the ball all over the place. And so I believe, you know, while there are legitimate concerns and complaints from clients and patients, I know that we hear positive feedback from our clients about the services that they're receiving and the action, and access to services and how to treat it when you get into services. Because I feel very strongly that we now have an intentional provider investing in Curry County, and that is ADAPT. They've poured more money into our community by coming in and taking on a huge demand that was not presented to them in its full entirety. And so I just want to remind people that there's, there's always going to be pickups and problems. We are, and I love the solution work that's being done right here and the dialogue is happening just between Officer Greg right now and Jerry. I mean, things can be resolved, but we need to know about them to be able to have a dialogue about it. And then one other thing, it's probably a little early at 18 months, but do you have plans or have you done any patient satisfaction surveys since you've been working in Curry? And what would those results tell us?
Our clients does that usually, and so they do it every year. And I don't know where.
We have, actually, we do one externally purchased, third-party vendor patient evaluation each year, and I don't know where it fell within our cycle with Curry. Then we also do quarterly in-house things, so yes, we have. So there's a, it's a sampling though, so they, I think they push until they get about 20%. So anyway, yes, we do have.
We get to see what that feedback is, so that we're getting the big picture versus individual incidences that are rising to the occasion of complaint.
But it also kind of sounds like, so you don't want to be your client. How do I become your client?
Because you're not on intake or so, you know, page.
And how do I qualify for?
You become, you come into, if you're homeless or you're struggling with health in Curry.
So it's, so that subject population works for you and has a relationship with ADAPT, whereas a county employee is told that they don't accept the insurance. So these are issues that.
Generalizing what I said, and I want to be clear that that's not what I said. There are going to be problems within every subset of populations served by any service provider.
You said, you're having, you're having great experiences.
What we're hearing from our clients is that they feel more welcome, they feel more supported via the services they're receiving from ADAPT. They did not feel that support from our drug discount contractor. And neither did they invest in the staffing levels or in, in our community that we're seeing now. So I thought that's my comparison that makes.
Connie had a question for Greg.
Actually, I have a couple of questions in common. Does this feel like an advisory board? I can't even get a advisory board meeting. This should be happening, okay? And so I know that the CCOs do what they do, but we need that local scoping. And we're just about ready to have this conversation with our college district, okay? We're not having that local scoping at our pre-campus. And we love the relationship and the, and the good information and exchange with Jerry one-on-one, but the things that happened here today, they're necessary. I love working with Aaron Porter and Kara Hood. They're amazing, but we need that local scoping. So however we get that, we need to get that. We're gonna leave the community out of the conversation, and I'm grateful for a conversation that I had with Commissioner Tross because it reminded me of a number of things. Yes, crisis intervention is a piece of the puzzle, and a huge one. And I have to say, the previous mental health provider had a 17-minute response time, okay? So incredible. It was run by Marines, so you have to kind of know that. But what I'm not hearing is plans for the future, workforce development conversations. We need to include the college in that conversation. One thing that I know from working with VA, and I am the Secretary for the Mental Health Advocacy Council, we created that organizational architecture to deal with the fact that there are so many veterans in most of the counties that are served by ADAPT. And so I, when I don't see us communicating well with the VA, that's partly the VA's problem, but it's also partly our fault too, because we have to bring them into the room. And so I'm willing to do that. And the chairperson for the Mental Health Advocacy Council is working really hard because we understand that there are many veterans who are not using VA mental health care who would like an alternative. And it's going to happen that those veterans are gonna get educated about the value of OHP versus VA, or maybe both. The Mental Health Advocacy Council is going to be at and attending, and I'm inviting everybody in this room to attend virtually, the, the mental health summit that the VA is having on the 26th. It's going to be held in Roseburg, but there is a virtual opportunity, and there's gonna be people from the Veterans Benefits Administration, including an undersecretary. So my point in all this is.
Connie, you've got a question here?
Yes. My point, my point in all this is, can we get an advisory board in, in addition to what's already happening? We see the energy, we see the need, we see the synergy even.
Yeah, well, can I interject real quick before, I know you didn't want to talk to you. So, so Greg, I think one of the challenges that we're facing right now, and I think ADAPT's in the center of the challenge, is doing CMHP work from afar, right? I mean, because you didn't have that in Douglas. You were centered in Douglas, you had Douglas representation, you had Douglas Advisory Board, you had Douglas Board, right? And right now, I think part of what we're hearing, at least what I'm, the way I'm interpreting what we're hearing is, is that we're missing some of that outlet locally. So what ends up happening is that we take on front of it without an ability to essentially answer for those things. And, and I think that might be some of the, some of the crux of what's occurring. And, you know, Connie hit on a good point, like if we had, we could get a local mental health advisory board, an addictions board, and, you know, maybe part of their responsibility is to report to the county as well, so that there's communication going two directions. You know, things of that nature, I think we can, we can try, because communication seems to be a big miss, and there's a lot of unanswered. And so I think that if we can help shore up some of those things, I think it's gonna make for a smoother transition. Because, I mean, my, I'll just say, my, my, one of my stated concerns is that currently, any, any person, I'm assuming pretty much everybody in this room would not qualify for mental health or addiction services with ADAPT. They'd have to go out of, out of county. And.
That's not correct.
But from the experience of what we're hearing, that's why, that's why we have this...
We're going to track that down in detail and find out what's going on there, but that should not be the case.
No, but I'm saying, I guess with insurance assistance, would not qualify with Adapt.
You know, I'd have to look and see where our status with the UN network provider, with the various insurances involved.
Yeah.
That's a note I have to follow up there, but no, we should be able to see care with Adapt, you know, as capacity allows for that.
Sure.
So we're still building capacity.
So in essence, is it, is it possible that we explore this? Are you, with, with having a single CMHP and then the LMHA overseeing those, are, I guess where I'm confused a little bit is, is are we, as the CMHP for Curry, are you required to have a, a, no, a local mental health advisory board in Curry? Or does the one in Douglas suffice for Curry as well?
Yeah, so I think I've mentioned earlier, we are having our regulatory council look at that to make sure we're responding to the proper statutes and up-to-date rules. So I don't want to answer you on that as a final answer, but we would do a local, if we were doing that, we would do a Curry committee. I do think, whether we're required in statute or not, at the end of the day, that this would be a good idea.
Yeah.
And on hearing that, I heard Connie loud and clear, I think it'd be great. I mean, I do think this is very valuable feedback for us. It'll help us get better quicker. And so, yes, I think we should do it. We'll look at what requirements might be meant for that. It was also our plan from the beginning to bring a Curry resident representation into our Board of Directors that serves as the LMHA. So we're going to be putting applications out for that, for people that might be interested. But anyway, I think that my short answer would be let's do it. And then the more detailed one is, I do want to do research on exactly what, if any, requirements currently are that, you know, that would regulate it or make us populated in a certain way.
If we, if we are able to move forward with that, Greg, is it possible that you, you could work with the county in the selection of that advisory board?
Sure.
That would be, I think, a nice connection as well. So, sorry, Phoebe.
Sorry, guys. Not paid to be here, right? I'm volunteering, I have to go to a meeting, so I apologize for being kind of rude. But two things, I'm glad you brought up the Board of Director seat, because both Dr. Lowery and Commissioner Tross had set up accountability, and I think having a Curry resident on your advisory board, since their self, what's the term? I think you're using that self-regulatory piece, so that's leveled, would be essential. But I also, I can't let you down on my positivity, right? I have one more negative piece. Mr. Fitzgerald, I can't remember your title, and I apologize. One of the issues is that they're not, we're not alone in this. Like, my, I have friends and family all over the state, they're waiting three months with insurance to get a mental health provider. So expecting Adapt to just magically do it, people don't go. Like, I'm trying to think of my family and friends and colleagues around the state. People don't go to the county mental health office. People who are, tend to be professionals with insurance, they don't go to the county mental health office. They go to Kaiser, or they go to their primary care provider, they go to a psychiatric clinic. This doesn't seem the model where it would be expected to me. Like, I don't know, from what I've seen around in my years, I don't see that. I don't see people going to the county health department to get their mental health care. And you guys are serving as our county mental health department. The other positive thing I have to say, and I have to go to my meeting, is that on the Gold Beach City Council, if you know Mayor Kaufman, we are laser focused on housing, and Adapt, as part of their recruiting project, their process, they actually have housing providing to people they're trying to recruit. They have a place for people to land, which is a huge piece. So they're trying on the housing piece. And that, as a city councillor who's super focused on housing, is really exciting to see, and I thank you for that, and I thank you for being here, and I'm sorry, guys, to leave, but I'm very excited you're all here working on this, as your regular dogs. Thank you.
Phoebe, it's quarter after 12:00. We can keep going, or we can break for lunch and come back. It's up to, it's up to everybody in the room, so.
So I'll just say, I do have a meeting with the tribe of the crew space. I'm hoping you'll come back and have a love conversation.
Okay.
Share it with you.
Yeah.
Because I've been connected by Niojai Kelly. So we were looking at this this morning. In the mental random understanding when the transfer to OHP occurred, we actually agreed to adjourn your date of July 1 of 2021, so you're four-year mark with July 1 of 2025. So you don't have to use that. I don't either.
I know.
I hope you'll be back.
It's a shorter runway.
It does make sort of a runway. I think the thing to know is, just a piece of advice, is that doing this as a change of a triennial is more agile. And then the second choice would be at the change, the shift in the school year. It gets very messy in terms of parading dollars, all of that kind of stuff. I mean, we make it work in half, but...
I gotta say that, I mean, it just, you know, the whole public health situation, that's one thing, but the real issue that, that kind of brought this up was, was people complaining about not getting service. And that's, that's why I wanted to attend this meeting. And, you know, this is Curry County, and guess what? We don't have psychiatric clinics here. We all are in the same limited vote, and I expect services to be extended to every member of our community, not just, not just the homeless. We have many people with severe problems, people that work for me that have this happen, and I want, that's why I wanted to bring this to your attention. I'm glad that you're listening. Because I also know, it's not perfect. I've been involved in this stuff for many, many years myself, and I was, I worked, I, prior to my association with Curry County, I was chairman of the Board of Southern Coast because we needed to get healthcare of some sort to this end of the county, and I've been involved at many levels for many years. I understand that there's not, that there's not a magical fix, and I take exception to Phoebe, you know, suggesting that that's what I was, was supposing. The reality is, it's a mess, but doesn't mean, doesn't mean that we're excused from, from trying to meet that challenge every day.
So, it's fine, it's different, I don't, I agree. We want to get services for everybody. I think Phoebe was correct, that as a community mental health program, you are sort of the safety net program of all these fidelity things that come with statutory requirements that we, we do certain things. And those are also delegated to the CCO. So we do have requirements we have to meet, but personally, I agree with you completely that we want to meet the whole community's need to the degree we can. Now, that does take a network of providers in my experience, and that might have been some of what she was, so, you know, there's going to be behavioral health services at Coast, there's going to be private therapists in the community. You know, there should be multiple points, but we don't look at that as like, oh, we don't have to do it because there's going to be all of that. We're aggressively looking for resources to bring in to Curry County. I think we've successfully now gotten right around $10 million in federal and state grant money to come in to the county to, you know, do additional resources. We're providing resources now that are not reversible, that are, you know, outreach services and this sort of thing. So we plan to continue to do that. That is our model. We're also pushing for, and one of the, one of those grants, in fact, is a federal grant, to do work towards a certified community behavioral health center. So this is sort of a, similar to an FQHC model where there's a wraparound payment and this sort of thing, prospective payment, that basically builds capacity, lifts up the services and so on. So we're not done. I mean, we're working towards getting there, and I do agree with you that we want to have good access to high-quality mental health services for everyone in the county, not just the most severe. But we do sort of start with, you know, the basic services we need for people that are dangerous in the community, dangerous to themselves or to others, and get, or will escalate into very severe mental health conditions without care.
My point is that those people are, those people are, exist at every socioeconomic level in reality. And when, when somebody contacts me and they're, and they're about to shoot themselves, I want to know that, I want to know that somebody's going to answer the phone, and that's, that's, and that's, that's the level that I want to be accessible for everybody.
I think that's a reasonable expectation.
And that would be Adapt, you know, the crisis service.
Right, exactly, right. And that's where, I just want to, I want to make sure that we work, that we get that done so that, so that when, because, because the fundamental disconnect that I heard at first was that, was Greg said that we don't, we don't worry about charging for services, okay? That's, as long as that's the primary tenet, then everything else works out great, and we figure out how to, how to backfill you later when, when people aren't paying. But, but we also need to work, you know, in, in, one of my prior lives, I worked in the health insurance business, and I'll tell you, you have to go out, you have to make those deals with providers, and you gotta, and it's brutal. And even as a person as, you know, if you're, if you want to have a successful business in, in a rural community, you have to go out and do all that for the insurance company. And, but otherwise, you got no business. So, and I know it's difficult, and every time you turn around, people are like, we're not, eh, we're not doing that anymore, so you gotta renegotiate. I get it, it's hard, and we'd like to help.
It seems like maybe one of the first steps we kind of need to do is, you know, I'm a CCO, working with Medicaid. What I'm hearing is, it's those with insurance who have gaps. Finding out what those insurance types are that are the gaps is going to be a huge step that you have, providers that aren't, aren't connected to the different insurance types. Looking at that. When you find gaps, sometimes providers will step into those gaps because they know that's a hole, but if you don't know that's a hole, they're not willing to step in. You know, Coast community could look for somebody. Are you, are you set up to build a PacNet or Blue Cross Blue Shield, that's a huge hole? I mean, insurance is safe, really? And so it seems like you have to carefully figure out what the steps are, and then figure out there is a need and a want, and, and maybe they are able to bring in, it's not an Adapt thing, because they don't have to own that, but we share the love, and we understand what our holes are.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's good to hear the needs because it helps us as well. You know, another one, I just, that gets brought to me a lot is the, is with the youth, Medicaid, essentially, a lot of the youth who have court-ordered drug and addiction requirements are not able to access Adapt. And so it's been put into a bind in terms of with the county general department. The judges have also discussed this with me at length, not just with the youth, but with adults in addictions, because this is more than just mental health. And so I think, you know, it's good to spur much, I mean, this is an ongoing conversation that I think has to continue because the need is not shrinking, obviously.
Can anyone else mention one other thing you want to write down? Kuzum Curry Hug, that is something that we put into effect at four, both, both counties. So we put in the Village Psychiatric Clinic for our CD and mental health services, but it's how you can find a provider in Kuzum Curry counties. We're trying to get people to sign into that. It's, it's a website that you can go to, but they also have a state manager. So if you're interested in, if you're trying to find somebody to help, they're not just serving the OHP population, that was something I wanted the entire community to be certified by this. So they, on their website, and it's just double-checking, you know, you can go and find out from Curry County who takes this type of insurance for these types of services. Some of it's telehealth, and it will be upfront, you know, Dr. Kerber shows up, and it's a telehealth service option, but it's an option.
Well, maybe no option, you know.
Yeah, so utilize that website, and the more we can get people signed into that, the better that website will be for the resource that you as a community provider can go in right now and find out, like, I need, I need a lovely MBR for my 12-year-old, but maybe that's not it. But who does that in my area? Who shoots 12-year-olds? And so utilize that resource.
Laura from Long Care's got it.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I think, I appreciate what you said, insurance is important, resources are important, but if you don't have the providers to throw those resources back, it's not going to matter. It's not going to matter the amount of money, it's not going to matter the space. And, you know, I have the privilege of chairing the Healthcare Workforce Committee for State of Oregon, and we're trying to develop a strategic plan to deal with this. Because we lose providers because there's no housing. We're offering, organizations are offering $40,000 and $50,000 incentive bonuses to get providers here. They can't find a house, they're not going to stay. I have one Medicaid dentist to serve the entire county. I, you can't even imagine the anxiety I experience daily, because I know that's the case, and I can't serve these members. We're trying to get them, we're trying to recruit them from different states. We cannot get providers there, it's very difficult. So I just wanted to bring that, because I haven't heard that mentioned yet, but you have to have the providers to serve these. We have people that accept the physicians at the hospital and the who's on loan, I mean, constantly, and they will sign that contract and then not show up two weeks before because they cannot secure a package.
Yeah.
If I could just make one last suggestion, Kira brought up the system of care. I serve on the executive advisory. It'd be great to have our prevention contractor in those meetings. We need to give services, help, it's a prevention contract for the whole county, it's not just used, it's everyone. We'd like, we are inviting county reps to come and join us in these meetings regarding our systems of care in Curry, because there's some really valuable information. There's a harm reduction thing that happens every month between Kuzum Curry. We'd love to have again our prevention, our county prevention rep in our meetings. I was speaking with Commissioner Al Corrigan the first ride about getting a height of a rep down here because we've got a real problem. We should have a drug trafficking, and we need help. And that, you know, if we get more involved in the county, we can start taking bites of the elephant and moving in the right direction, and then roaming together.
Yeah.
To solve some of the problems that are systemic within our community and that are causing a ripple effect and causing crisis. Right now, I think I've mentioned to you guys in court and other meetings, we've kind of been without any essential services from our community action agency for a number of years now. That's causing crisis. There are veterans that are, you know, threatened with eviction because they have a promise in one hand, and an eviction notice in the other, and they'll check them into their inboard. We've got really issues here, we're creating crisis within our community, and it's a huge elephant to bite, but we've got to start taking bites together and start learning how to get to shore and stability for our whole community.
We need to make sausage out of that elephant. Al, you got a question?
Oh, I was just going to say, telehealth, as much as I don't think it's quite as good as in-person health, is, because of shortages in, in mental health providers all around the country, has grown really fast just since the pandemic. And I would question, does anybody know how many practicing psychiatrists are in Curry County and how many in Coast? And I would venture to guess it might be two. And the only people that can prescribe mental health drugs, from antidepressants to bipolar, to schizophrenic drugs, are MDs, DOs, psychiatrists, and psychiatric nurse practitioners. So there just aren't a lot of them. So we're dealing with a shortage here, and we may have to be, the problem with the telehealth thing is, is not everybody has access. You know, if you live up, upriver, you know, you don't have telehealth.
You will shortly, beacon broadband.
Pretty soon, hopefully, but.
Lena?
So we, so we, up until July, we had two psychiatric nurse practitioners, one of those left and went back to Kentucky, and we have another one joining us in October, and we'll be back too. And they are providing it through telehealth, but...
Hey, I can sense that we're winding down.
Can I just want to do one, one, I really do want to thank everyone here, but also, this is a very important conversation, but there's a next step that I want to make sure that we engage, which is closing the loop. So when you guys end up talking to the police and then saying, hey, this is... hey, this is how we're going to address this stuff, that needs to get back to this group or to you guys. And you need to like really make sure that whatever this community, whatever the community solution is, that that closed loop is happening. Because there's going to be a lot of times where it is a provider problem. It is a West Coast homelessness problem that is driving that. And people understanding that that's what's at the root of this. It's not a failing of a delivery system, it's something larger. I'm not saying that's acceptable. You know, the power of low expectations, that's real. And we need to figure out a way to eat that elephant. But I think it's really important that we understand exactly what the root of some of these problems are. And it's not all just a West Coast problem. I mean, you guys are a new organization, starting out. And we need to understand that too. And I think the more that we're solving those problems, and as solutions come about and we see those, it'll build trust, and that will actually get us into a place where we're actually solving. So I really encourage you guys to do that.
That being said, when does this group meeting end?
Good question. When do you want it to meet again?
Well, I think that it's fair to meet in a month's time, to see where-
Record, okay. Yeah.
To see where things are at. I don't, I mean, I just learned it at a meeting yesterday, and I'm like, okay, well, you know, let's see what's going on. Because I also have an interest in the mental health side of things as well, the mental health side of things, the work that I do.
Well, I think the conversation, because what spurred the conversation, Jackie, is, is if the county wants to move forward with returning the LMHA and the Public Health Authority over to, back to the county, and going, what that process looks like, if it's the community desire to do so, and where we are with things. I think what we're going to need to do is look at what that road looks like if that road is wanting to be traveled down, right? So and then, you know, I think in the midst of all of that, like you mentioned, I think what we can be doing is having ongoing conversations about service delivery, current obstacles, current wins, things of that nature. Because as I kind of mentioned earlier with Greg, I think that where a lot has been, an obstacle that is unnecessary, a self-imposed obstacle that we've encountered, is lack of communication. And that's not one that needs to be availed, right? So that's one we can control. And I, that's why I applaud what you're saying, is I think we need to have more regular conversations around this as we also educate ourselves about the feasibility of this, even this conversation of the LMHA and the Public Health Authority, you know, and what that looks like. It is good to hear some of the concerns from different entities that weigh into as a factor moving forward. But you know, I think, personally, I think that there's a four-year window, right?
Or beyond, it doesn't typically happen.
Right, no, no, or beyond, yes, yes, but a minimum, a minimum. And I think, I think, you know, I want to respect that as for the public health and mental health portions of things because ADAPT has made efforts to invest in real property and some infrastructure pieces. And I think, you know, one of the things that, you know, full transparency that I talked to Greg about was the potential for, you know, working together to establish some potential benchmarks, some goals to work towards so that we can have those, and then also have the ability to monitor those goals as we move forward to see if there's growth there. So you know, that, I think, and these conversations help build what those potential goals look like, I think. Because what the community screams for is generally what's proverbially on fire. And summing it all up, what I hear screaming for the most is to be heard. And I feel like there's a lot that hasn't been, hasn't been heard. And I think that's what led to this conversation.
I think that's a story. I mean, you're never going to hear the ten, you're one, but you're going to hear that one back one.
Of course.
If we can get some of those, like, figured out, like, and communicate about those, like internally, quickly, get them resolved, and not let them fester, getting that good work into the community. One, shows how responsive that they really are. Two, that we can fix things and make them better. The other thing I want to say, and I am just going to say this on a personal level, I know most people in this team, really, but if I am looking at starting and building, I'd like to know sooner than later that the community's going to support me so that when I keep putting extra resources into Currie, I don't know if in four years it's going to be made away. So learning this process, this process that she's talking about, I want to be involved in that, I think we should all be involved in that. And then kind of get to a spot where we say, thank you, ADAPT, you're doing fantastic. We're going to keep this going so that they're not policing kind of energy in that space.
Yeah, and I just want to be clear, what I was trying was for the LPHA. I do not know what the problem is for LPHA. I have no idea, that is not a problem. So I want to be really clear about that. That's what I want to find out.
Nobody knows that one either. That's another common theme, is that one.